Also gives them the opportunity to drink a little bit more coffee. Okay, welcome everybody to the December the 20th, 2021, the last meeting of, last regular meeting of GBOS in 2021. Welcome everyone. Let me go through a couple of statements at the beginning. The Girdwood Board is supervises its committees and subcommittees are subject to Alaska Open Meetings Act as found Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct, which can be found on our website. So I'm going to call this order at 7:02. We'll do a roll call, so of GBOS members. So my name is Mike Edgington, I'm co-chair and land use supervisor. Brianna?
I'm Brianna Sullivan, co-chair and Parks and Recreation and Cemetery Supervisor.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Jennifer Wingard, Public Safety Supervisor.
Thank you. Guy?
Guy Wade, Fire Department Supervisor.
Thank you. And Amanda?
Amanda Sassy, Road Supervisor.
Okay, and now we'll go through disclosures. Does anybody have any disclosures? I will have one, but I'll cover mine at the end.
Yes, I, my husband has worked for the Forest Service Glacier Ranger District. He's not currently working for them. And that is Agenda Item, talking about their new building. And I'm part of the Imagine Girdwood Committee.
Okay, so if we do those one at a time, I would rule that since your spouse is not a current employee, item number eight does not rise to a substantial conflict of interest. My ruling in number nine was it, is it, does lead to, it does rise to a substantial conflict of interest, so I would, I would recommend that you do not take part in item number nine. But again, any member of the, anybody on the board, if they disagree with those calls can, can challenge and we can move to a vote. Yeah, I'm not hearing any, so, so if that's clear, Amanda, item number eight, you can take part in item number nine, you should not.
Okay, thank you.
I saw Guy, I saw your hand up. Did you have any?
On item number nine, are there any other board members at this time that want to feel like there might be a conflict of interest?
Yeah, I was going to bring it up for me. So I will, so Jennifer, did you have something to? Did you have a disclosure?
Sorry, yeah, I was also going to say on number nine that I'm not on Imagine Girdwood, but have attended the meetings, I'm not a part of the executive committee.
Okay, so I would, so on item number nine, I would say that if you're, I would rule that if you're not a member of the executive committee and you're a member of the general public, I think the, the membership includes everyone who could be a member of, who can vote in LUC meetings. So it's a very broad membership, it's not particularly exclusive to any individuals. So I would say that would not rise to a conflict if you're a participant in the meetings. The executive committee, in the case of Amanda, I would say probably does. Okay, so in that case, I will hand over the chair to, to Brianna while I go through my disclosures.
Okay.
So the same as Amanda, right? I'm disclose on item number nine, I'm a member of the executive committee on Imagine Girdwood.
Okay, as Chair, I would rule that that does rise to a substantial conflict because you're on the executive committee, and so I would recommend you do not participate in Agenda Item number nine.
Thank you.
If anyone disagrees with that, we can move to a vote. I don't see any hands. Mike, you may have the chair back.
Thank you, Brianna. Okay, now we've gone through roll calls and disclosures, we'll go through agenda approval and minutes approval. So first of all, the, I would recognize a move to approve tonight's agenda. Would anyone so like to move?
This is Brianna, I would like to amend the agenda for tonight. Sassy has her hand up, I didn't see that.
I would also like to amend, so after you.
I would remove number nine from the agenda.
That was what I was going to ask for.
Okay, perhaps we should have done that before disclosure, but never mind. Okay, is there, so is that a second, Amanda?
I second to the amendment, yes.
Okay, so we have any, we can either vote on the amendment or just, I would say by consent, if I don't hear any objection, we'll just accept the amendment. Or we'll accept the amendment and then we will vote on the amended agenda. So if nobody objects, I don't hear an objection, in that case, we can do a voice vote on the agenda as amended, so item number nine is dropped. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
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 Thank you, I heard unanimous approval. Now we'll move on to the minutes for the November 15th minutes. I hear a motion to approve these minutes.
Motion to approve November 15th minutes.
Thank you. And a second?
Guy Wade?
Thank you, thank you, Guy. Again, we'll do this by voice votes, all those in favor of approving the minutes for the November 15th, please say aye.
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 Thank you, and again, I heard that is unanimous. Now we'll move on to the minutes of the November the 29th work session. Actually, I think I should change that, it says, it was a special meeting, not a work session, on November the 29th. So we should correct the agenda slightly, it's the November 29th Special Meeting Minutes Approval.
This is Brianna, move to approve, November 29th Special Meeting.
Thank you, Brianna. Do we hear a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you. And again, we'll move to voice vote unless someone would like to roll call. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, again, I heard that is unanimous. Thank you, everybody. We have a few announcements now. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment, please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board or other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Be respectful of everyone's opinions. GBOS committees, that is Trails, Land Use, Public Safety and Cemetery, will hold officer elections at their first regular meeting in the new year. Election for GBOS seat C will be on the ballot in April, filing period is January the 14th to January the 31st, that's filing at, with the, with the clerk's office of municipality. Girdwood Transfer Station will be closed on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, as well as New Year's Eve and New Year's Day, will resume services on the 26th and the 2nd respectively. Halton Hills Development Community Meeting is this Wednesday, December the 22nd, at 6:30 via Teams, there is a link on the agenda. And also later tonight, we can't go on too late because TuGatch Electric has scheduled an outage at 11:00 PM tonight, ending at 3:00 AM in the morning. I think this is the delayed change from last week. We'll now move into the, into the regular agenda. So number one is, I believe from the municipality, oh, sorry, Brianna, you have your hand up.
I see that it says Teams here, but Connie Yoshimura just said Zoom, but maybe she meant Teams, so either way, we're all going to get the link.
Could you? Could you clarify?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, I am, I am seeing a Teams link, I think, when I look on the agenda. Could you clarify, Connie? Or maybe Margaret?
Our plan was to do Zoom with a live chat, so we can reconsider that situation. Charlotte, do you have an opinion of the difference between Teams and Zoom? You know, all right. Whatever is the easiest for everyone will be fine.
Margaret, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I think this was set up by HLB, and since they're MUNI, I think they have the same requirement that we do to use Teams. So I think, while some of us still love Zoom a lot, I think it is in fact on Teams.
All right, we'll make that adjustment, thank you.
Okay, has there been a, has there been a communication of a different link at all, or is this the? I'm just wondering if there's possibly, okay, that's great. So in that case, it is, it does appear to be on Teams on Wednesday. Thank you for that, thank you for picking up, Brianna, I also didn't notice. Okay, so we'll move on to item number one, which is the 2022 Property Tax Assessment Presentation. So is Jack on, do we have someone from the municipality? Ah, I see you, see you there, Jack.
Yeah, I'm here, this is Jack.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Please go ahead.
Yeah, well, I appreciate it, thank you very much for this opportunity, what I'll do, it doesn't look like I'm able to share my screen.
Let me see, can you put a request in, or can you?
Yeah, it looks like it's grayed out.
Let me hang on a second, let me change something real quick.
Okay. And my bandwidth has been a little spotty, so I'm.
How about now, Jack?
Refrain from sharing my screen, okay, there it is, perfect.
You got it.
Okay, so I'll be reasonably quick with everything, I think for, for tonight, so again, my name is Jack Adamos, I am the Municipal Cessor, and just so, so folks know, actually, I will be moving on to, to other endeavors here early next year as well, so just wanted to let everybody know about that. So the thing I wanted to talk about really is the 2022 values, and largely just that Girdwood will be experiencing increase in values. I know last year I came and I talked and I let everybody know that, that will be coming, and we're looking to, to increase again. So I'll talk a little bit more about that in the presentation, but first, I just want to talk a little bit, very similar to last year, what we do, looking at maybe some of the exemptions, looking at Girdwood a little bit, and then I'll go into some of the valuation changes and what we can expect for magnitude. So I really like to show this slide, this one really just shows at the very bottom, you can see there, there's exemptions in red and valuation in blue, and really, at the end of the day, property appraisal, that's what we do, we, we value property and we administer exemptions. And so we administer exemptions year round, we also inspect property year round, so by municipal code, we are required to physically inspect property once every six years, just, so if you see someone with the MOA vest measuring the side of your house or a neighbor's house, that is probably us. Now, January 1, that's when all taxable property is assessed, so basically, that's a lien date, that's the snapshot of what the value of your property is as of that date. That does kick off a series of dates, that kicks off the appeal period, I'll talk a little bit more about the appeal period and what you can do once you get your green card and have questions. That appeal process generally ends on or before June 1, and then we start to kick into the valuation analysis where we look at the coming tax year, and then we look at, we pick up new construction right towards the end of the year. Again, we want to be mindful of that January 1 lien date or snapshot. So this is 2021 values, when I created this presentation, we didn't quite have the data ready for, to compare for tax year 2022. I can't imagine there's going to be much significant change between these two, but you can see municipality of Anchorage, you can see taxable real property is comprised about 68% of the total value, we also have the real property exemptions, that's a little over a quarter is exempt for, for real property exemptions. And if you look at the residential and state, which is the residential exemption in the state, senior or disabled veteran, that's about, almost 12% of the, of the total exemption, so that's huge. And then you also have personal property there at about 6%. See if I can make that smaller, I can, excellent. When you look at Girdwood, the picture changes quite a bit, quite a bit is actually taxable real property at 85%, and you can see that the exemptions is nearly in half. Again, the residential state credit for Girdwood is, is about half, and that to me suggests kind of one of two things. One, it could be that people just aren't applying to exemptions to the residential and/or senior disabled veteran, or maybe they, they don't qualify, and I have heard that Girdwood often does have quite a few, is a place where there's second homes, so, so that, that could be part of it. But again, very different from, from the municipality as a whole, and just to let you know, the, the chart on the left does include Girdwood as a whole. Moving on, if we can here, so talking about exemptions a little bit more, what there is, if you do think you qualify for it, we do have the exemption form online for the 2022, they're due March 15th. For the state, that's the disabled veteran, senior citizen, $150,000 off of your exempt property. We also have the residential, which is 20% up to $50,000. Now, I say state and optional, state is because it's required by state statute, and then optional, we chose as municipality to adopt that residential exemption. When you do look at these, and you can see here, it says in right in the front there, to qualify for an exemption, and then it lists the reason for that, you have to, you know, please pay particular attention to that, and also, when you fill this out, think of this like a contract, I mean, this really is, one of the stipulations is, you know, if anything changes, you will notify property appraisal of your living status. And speaking of that, one of the things that we have been working on for, for a couple of years now is an exemption review. And the goal of this exemption review is to ensure that people who qualify for an exemption receive an exemption, and people who don't qualify don't receive an exemption, and we do look up to six years back for eligibility. So one of the steps that we first do is we look at and compare our data set, what we have in file to the PFD, that doesn't necessarily mean you qualify or don't qualify, but is a good starting base to then follow up and say, hmm, maybe something's not quite right here. So that's what will happen in step two, we'll flag those exemptions and we'll contact the property owner. Then moving in the upper right there, you can see step three, we start to work with that property owner, and we try to verify their eligibility, do they qualify, do they don't, and ultimately, at the end of the day, we do have to make that determination and send that letter. So generally, in, in general, this process is very slow, at the fastest, we would have about three months that this would, would go on with the property owner, that would be the fastest, but this can often go on a little bit longer than that, so we're not trying to make something really quick, we're just trying to make sure, again, that people are eligible or not. The other thing too is, we, we also have been proactive, so we just recently mailed out about, I believe it's about 1,200 letters to who we think may qualify for the senior exemption, so we, we're doing our stuff. And since the last two years of efforts, we have removed over 570 exemptions, which summed to over $32 million of value that went back in the tax roll. Really, what that means for the average homeowner is that's about a $5 savings, so $5 for every person can be quite a bit. So let's move on to the assessed values for this coming tax year 2022. So for Girdwood, we are, as you can see here, looking for some, some rather large changes. Single family, we don't have official numbers yet, but we are looking at anywhere from about 10 to 20%, probably somewhere in the 12 to 15 is probably more realistic of what will happen for single family homes. Condos, we're looking to increase about 5 to 10%, most likely, it's going to be probably at the lower end for condos. And then duplex, triplex, right there, very similar to single family homes, right there in the 10 to 20% range. And, and we, we have seen a lot of activity, and I guess that's what kind of this, this next one is, why are we increasing? And so if you recall, I came again last year, I basically said the same thing, we're increasing values, a part of that reason was we were, we're seeing a lot of, we were playing to some degree catch up, I think this year, we're, we're just seeing a huge bump in, in value, we might be also still catching up a little bit. Alaska is a non-disclosure state, and so we don't always get the sales that first year when the, the market's really, really going. But what we have been seeing is a very competitive market, especially in Girdwood, we've been seeing tight inventory, we've been seeing, at least in Girdwood, primary and the, the secondary homeowner, and again, maybe that, that's the exemption, where the exemption amount's about half of what it is in the bowl. We're also seeing short days on the market, we, we've been seeing, or at least I haven't been seeing, but what I've been hearing is that there's been concessions and sometimes offers above the list price, so those are all just very indicators of a pretty robust hot market. We also have low interest rates, I have no idea what will happen with, with the interest rates, maybe there'll be increase coming soon, I really don't know. And then as far as our data, our, our sale data does support this increase, we're rated about a 96 to 90% assessed value ratio, meaning that our values are, yeah, right, right there, almost at market value, right there, 96, 97%, and we also have the listing data at about 93% for, for a list ratio with the sale, with the assessed value. So we are seeing, again, we're, we're seeing and hearing a lot of anecdotal and discussion on the competitive market, and our data is also showing that and backing that up. This is also, I find to be a pretty interesting slide, because you can see here on the left, again, comparing the Anchorage Bowl, so this is looking at tax district one and three, you can see that there are a lot of different funds, and it does sum to, this is looking at 2021, by the way, and does sum to just slightly over 18 mils, 18.02 to be exact. And you can see Girdwood at the right there, substantially lower, it sums to about 13.59 last year, there was an area wide, just a tiny little sliver there, it was like a .05 mil from there, but one of the things is, is we are looking to raise not just Girdwood values, but we're also looking to raise the single family home market substantially, also in the bowl and also in Eagle River, just entirely by the municipality. So I, I think for this year, what you're going to probably see is, is Girdwood is probably not going to go up as more significant than, than the bowl, probably a little bit more disproportionately, but, but not, I wouldn't say significantly, because we are also looking at anywhere from single to double digits for the bowl as well for, for increases. So probably what this will mean for, for, for your mil rate is, there could be a chance that maybe the mil rate may go down this year. I have no idea, it'll be basically March, April timeframe that we'll, we'll really know what will be impacted there. So what's going to happen next here is, we're very close, again, that lien date is January 1, and so the next process is we're going to be sending out the, the green cards very soon here, and what you're going to be seeing here is, I'm sure you've seen these before, but you're going to get your value, building total, everything on there, you're going to get our phone number, if you have any questions about that, and then it's also going to have that deadline, we're estimating that the deadline is February 11th this year, not official yet, because we, we haven't sent them, so you know, we might be a day off from that, but that's what we're hoping and expecting from that. Again, that phone number, 343-6500, so that phone line will become live here very shortly. Pay attention to the back of those green cards too, there is a lot of information on that as well. So once you have that green card, once you have questions, what you can see there is that, that second line there, 30-day informal review period, that's a, that's a great time to then contact us, and you can see that it's green, yellow, orange and red, and the main point of that is call and call earlier, the better it is, the more we can do and help you, and a lot of questions and issues can be resolved during that 30-day formal review period, especially early on. Again, the 30-day notice, 30 days after that notice is when we have the deadline, and then we do have a deadline to submit evidence if you do appeal, that's going to be 15 days after. And then in general terms, so those blue, really, at the end of the day, if you do appeal, what you can expect is that we'll be contacting about mid-February, and it'll be working with the property owners from, on about mid-February all the way to about early May. Once that happens, we start to then focus on the Board of Legalization and really start to prep our documents to, to the Board of Legalization for, for them. So again, very quick here, just wanted to, the, the main point again, that I wanted to tell everybody know is that we are looking to increase values again this year, and it's been, we, we have a lot of information that shows that, that's a good move. And just so everybody knows, as an Municipal Cessor, my requirement is I need to get to market value the best that we can to the best of our knowledge.
Thank you, Jack, I'm sure there are many questions. I'll ask, first of all, extend it to the, to the board, any of the supervisors have questions for Jack? Right, I have a, it's probably a clarification rather than a question, can you go back to slide number nine, where you showed the mil rates?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, a couple of quick things, the differences in area wide is just an anomaly of last year, they should normally be the same size, and they normally are very small sliver. And the other thing is the orange that says Girdwood Valley, we've already fixed our budget for a dollar amount, so if assessments go up by 10%, our mil rate shrinks by 10%, so the amount of, typically the amount of tax which people are paying stays, would stay the same whether the assessment goes up or down. It's not strictly true, but it's almost true, almost exactly true. So because of that, that is not true of the school, the school, because it's done across the whole of the municipality, if valuations go up, then the amount of tax we're paying on individual houses are going to go up as well.
Yeah, maybe can I expand on that too, I appreciate that.
Yeah, please.
So if, for example, Girdwood goes up disproportionately up or disproportionately down to the rest of the bowl, that would impact Girdwood a little bit more, right? So like if this, if Girdwood goes up, like I said, we're, we're looking to increase Girdwood a little bit more than the increase in the, in the bowl, so that would potentially negatively impact Girdwood from that.
Yeah, we don't want to turn it into a math lesson, but basically, the thing to pay attention to is the difference between the, the average across the whole of the municipality versus what's happening in Girdwood, so if we're going up by, say, 15% and overall Anchorage valuations are going up 10%, that's the equivalent of kind of a 5% increase in the score component, but it would not be an increase in the Girdwood Valley component for people in Girdwood.
Yeah, well, thanks for clarifying the Girdwood Valley component.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any questions from supervisors, I did see briefly, I think, Shelley's hand up, is that, do you have a question, Shelley?
It was kind of a question and a comment, I was surprised to see Jack here, because I think he's on leave for his last two weeks at the municipal. I was surprised to see Jack here, because I think he's on leave for his last two weeks at the Muni. He is parting ways, retiring, I believe. So thanks for being here, Jack. Who is going to be acting in your place? So who should we, who should we bother, assail assault in your?
Yeah, a good question right now. I've been working with the CFO. And we don't have anybody officially lined up as of right now.
Okay. Well, when you do, we will, we'll be sure Girdwood knows, because I'm sure there will be questions.
Yeah, for sure.
I'm assuming whoever takes that role, the phone number will still work.
Yeah, phone, email. Yes, and then obviously the front desk and that, that appeal hotline can be also very helpful as well.
Okay, thank you, Kyle.
Jack, I've received this question, you know, with submitting for exemption, either mail it in or fax it in. I guess people, the question I've gotten back is how they know it's been accepted and approved before the, because you get the deadline and then you get your card or your final bill in the early summer. People just want to make sure that they were approved and done that way.
Yeah, it's a good question. So right now, we don't have a efficient process to notify everybody who qualifies for exemption. So what I would recommend is, if they send it in, maybe give a, call us back several weeks later and say, did you receive it, what's the status, everything else? Now, that being said, if you don't qualify, if we receive that exemption, we process it, we review, and we find that you don't qualify for it, you will be getting a letter stating that we denied your exemption. That is a statutory requirement.
Okay.
But in the new, so we are doing an upgrade project on our current system right now, our current mass appraisal system. And we are hoping to be able to, well, it's not hoping, we will be able to have property owners file online for the exemption, and then they should be able to track that. And so that's going to be a huge upgrade in customer service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the community? Please raise your hand, or if you're on the phone, speak out. Okay, I'm not seeing any more questions. Again, thank you very much indeed, Jack, and I really appreciate, although it's, you know, obviously not, I guess it's the news many of us expected, not necessarily wanted. Thank you again for both being preemptive last year, giving us the presentation, and again this year. It's a good, I hope your successor does the same in the future and gives us the heads up. Thank you.
Yeah.
Actually, I saw one of the hands.
Oh, okay.
I did see someone else's hand, did anyone? Okay, I'm not seeing it now. Yeah, thanks, Jack.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to jump off here, I have a early obligation tomorrow morning.
Understood. Thank you. So now we'll move on to item number two, legislative report. So again, if any of our state senators, representatives, or assembly members or school district representatives would like to speak. I see Representative James Corfman, would you like to go first, James?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you, welcome.
My voice locked up while I was sitting here quietly. So I guess the big story is what's going to be coming on Wednesday, the 22nd. And that's where we've reached out to various councils and the board of supervisors to have a delegate or two attend a meeting where we're going to try and thread our way through some of the funding and process questions around projects. So the, we've, we'll have folks from, everything from the mayor's office, the assembly, the governor's office is going to send somebody to discuss federal money, and just to try and create awareness within the councils that we're working with in South Anchorage, all the way down to Girdwood. So if you have, if you don't have your two delegates set up, I know Matthew Harvey is coordinating that, let me know. But we should have you, at this point, we should have either one or two delegates to attend, just to, it's just about getting visibility on the funding processes and the money that's going to be available with the federal money that's coming in.
Thanks, James. Any questions from anybody, the supervisors or the community? Okay, thanks very much. Oh, Jennifer, please go ahead.
Sorry, quick question, I was just wondering, I guess I don't know, do we have delegates?
I believe we do. If not, like I said, let me know, but I thought we had already gotten responses from all the respective councils.
Sorry, Mike, do you know?
I've received an invite, yes, I have. I'm not sure who the second person is.
Yeah, I guess what we look for, if you want, Mike, if you've received that, if there's another that you, you know, that the board would want to include, we're just trying to keep the population manageable.
So I guess what I'm asking is, I'd like to have that on the record for who our representatives are, Mike.
Sure, can we, is Matthew on? Maybe he can clarify for us.
Matthew's not on right now. I guess I'm almost filling in for Matthew. He often does these meetings while I'm doing the Hillside meetings.
Yeah, would it be possible for him to share who the delegates are from, or who's been contacted from GBS, and we'll make sure there are two people there?
Okay, well, when I get with them tomorrow in the morning, we get with them and we'll just, we'll just double check this.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, any other questions from the community? Okay, we'll move on. I did not see Senator Holland, and I didn't recognize any representatives of the senator, but if someone is here, please speak up. Okay, I did see John Weddleton, one of our assembly, one of our assembly members is online. John, would you like to give us some reports?
Yeah, I have my usual report, but there's a really good one that Suzanne sent that maybe I should just read instead. I don't know if you guys post those in the minutes or not, but I'll go through some things really quickly. So we, what have we done recently? We have up for tomorrow some proposed changes to the election code. And the routine on that is, every year, the elections commission kind of looks back on how things went, and then writes up, you know, some proposed changes to the code, you know, try to improve things, and then that comes to the assembly. So we're looking at that. We had public hearing on it a week ago, and then another public hearing tomorrow, and likely action tomorrow, because we want to get these, you know, in code and ready to go, because the clerks are setting up for the April election, and they need to have this stuff ready to go. There's been some talk that it decreased the number of observers that people could have and decreased access to the process, and that was not the case, it's pretty much fine tuning. There is one feature that, you know, observers at the vote centers, and then also at the place where everything is counted down Ship Creek, are supposed to have training, but that hasn't gone well, it's kind of been put on the candidates to train the volunteers, and that wasn't working, so the clerks are going to take that task on. And there were proposals to do it more than 20 days, more than three or four weeks prior to the election. And that, that is, does not really fit the reality of a campaign, where things are pretty hectic, volunteers are fairly fluid. So I've got a proposal to shorten that time and to have it online training. Let's see how that goes, I actually suspect other members have similar changes. There are a couple other changes in there. One is, you know, they had a lot of trouble last year with people really aggressively photographing things and getting into things that could potentially be confidential. So I think they overreacted by saying you could not have any kind of, you know, recording or, you know, video device on your person in, you know, most of the, you know, voting places and the place where they count the votes. And that just seemed excessive, because I think most of us want to let go of our cell phone, we get texts and we need to know what's going on. And so I've got a modification of that, too. But for the most part, it's really pretty simple, and we should improve things. And some of the things that were causing trouble last spring were just new things came up and there weren't rules for it, so rules were being created, you know, on the fly. And this just puts, you know, more thought-out versions of them on paper, so people can know what they are. We also passed a budget, and it was the second time apparently in the city of Anchorage where it was unanimously accepted by the assembly, which seems like something the guy sit back and rest on his laurels, but that didn't happen, the mayor vetoed a number of provisions of it, most of those were overwritten. A couple of things for Girdwood is, he did override the full funding of the EMT, and we, or he vetoed that, and we overwrote that, so you should be getting that full funding, which I think is, everyone in that room understands, it was a commitment made, it's long overdue, and I'm glad to see that done. We also had some of the alcohol tax use the, kind of make sure that we allocate some to training the Girdwood Fire Department, fire and rescue, and also Whittier Police on the various techniques that we'll be using for the mobile crisis team. And that way you get some benefit out of that, you know, important work, it's funded by the alcohol tax. We also did the $25,000 item funding for Girdwood Valley Transit. It's been pretty routine, it was odd that it wasn't in there, and both the mayor and I co-sponsored that one, so I think you're pretty solid for that for some time to come. We also saw, you probably saw that we have allocated $6 million towards the, what we call Exit from Mass Shelter, which is a homeless and soloing arena, and we have them in some hotels and so on that respond to COVID-19. But we need to get out of Sullivan, we need to get this whole system in a better way, where it helps more people and costs a lot less. So we approved in October a joint direction with the mayor and the assembly. And this puts some money, we took $6 million of $11 million of CARES Act funds we have left towards this. And we actually, I think, you know, one was to buy the Sakaian for medically fragile, some of it was to buy the Barrett and on Spinnard Road for workforce housing, to get people who are homeless but actually have jobs and get them in a better situation and get them poised to get off on their own, finding places to rent. And then also money to start potentially planning for a new facility built, probably at the Tudor Elmore location next to the old police station, likely where the evidence lot is. And we actually got good news on two things there, and one is that the purchase of the Sakaian, we had thought we'd have to put $2 million into that, but it looks like Rasmussen and some native corporations will cover the entire cost of that. So we'll have $2 million to put somewhere else. And then for the new facility at Tudor Elmore, it's still somewhat conceptual, but it's to be designed for 200 single adults with a capacity to take another 130 with code requirements met, you know, building code mostly. And that had originally been proposed by the mayor at over 80,000 square feet for a facility there, and then scaled back to about 40,000 square feet, but the architect's current estimate is about 24,000 square feet. So that's a huge savings, the footprint of the structure and the cost of the structure and so on. So that was, that was really good, and it's really important, we are moving forward on this, and things are happening. So then I am very pleased to be part of that process. We've got also tomorrow an ordinance, 2021-117, that is essentially in response to a request from the mayor a couple months ago. You know, he has not been familiar with the way the assembly operates, so he asked, he says, you do things based on tradition. What are these traditions, why aren't they in code? And we thought, oh, that's a good idea. So it basically puts routines that we have been using routinely long before, I think those of us who are on the assembly now were there, just they've just carried on, so we put those into code. So those are some highlights here for questions, if anyone has any. And I will be there Wednesday at that meeting, thank you, James.
Thank you, John. Any questions from supervisors? Guy, please go ahead.
Yeah, John, hey, appreciate the update, and just want to say I appreciate you helping to reallocate those funds back into EMT and our alcohol tax as well. So do you foresee that, is this a yearly battle after this, or is it written into our budget going forward?
Well, that's a good question, you know, there should be a contract signed, and for some reason, getting that thing signed has been not happening. And that is, I think Michelle's frustrated, I don't know why, we have, everybody appears to have good intent, but it's just not happening. When the agreement is signed, it seems like you're pretty much locked in. And without that sign, I think this administration just looked at what was paid last year and continued that forward, and that wasn't fully funded. So I think it was, to some extent, on their side, not understanding where we stood, you know, they're pretty new to it, there's a lot going on, a lot to learn. So I hope not. You know, one, one big thing on that budget is, it is not really a fully funded budget. We, it does not reflect almost a million dollar increase for the fire department for the new firefighters labor agreement. And that, you know, was known in December, so we expected an S version, we're sure, how are we going to deal with that? So at this point, somehow the fire department will have to find a billion dollars in their budget, and that will be very ugly. I mean, that's like removing an ambulance, you know, it's just huge. So I intend to work with the city manager in January and get this fixed, because we can't have the fire department do that. It's going to be very difficult, but in the process of that, I want to try to firm up and make sure that this Girdwood money is a line item on there, so it'll be very visible, and that we won't have trouble in the future. But we'll see, there's going to be a lot of tough moving pieces in that discussion.
Thanks, John. Chief Weston, did you have a comment?
Okay.
Sorry, Guy, I think I spoke over you.
Country, I just, I appreciate it, John, we'll keep her on it, but thank you.
Michelle's done a great job keeping me on my toes.
Chief Weston, did you, did you have a comment on this particular issue, Chief Weston? I think you're on mute, she was still showing as mute. Okay, Guy, do you have a follow-up?
No, sorry.
Okay, I can see your hand up, Chief, but I do not hear you. Okay, we'll come back to that. I had similar comment to Guy as well, I think it'd be very, very helpful if we have this as a line item going forwards, so we can refer back to it. We had some difficulty last year in, or during the past year in justifying it based on this not being a number that appeared in the budget. So it was difficult to find out what the allocation was for this year. I have one other question, actually, it's in the, in the notes that Suzanne France sent us just beforehand. She also mentioned the reapportionment process. Could you just speak to that briefly, please, John?
Yeah, the, we have a committee that is working on that now. That will not be in place for the April elections. That will be for the 2023 elections, and I think we'll be seeing maps fairly soon, and then, you know, first batch of proposed maps, you know, we have time to work on it. Now, that is, I think two features on that, is it'll be dramatic changes, because we're adding a 12th member, so that the half-size downtown district that has one assembly member will be, instead will have six equal size. So that will shrink every other district. The, it won't be in effect until the elections of 2023, but it is possible we may have a special election for the second member for that, what we call the downtown district now, sometime prior to that, and that seems reasonable, you know, once we lay it out for, you know, six equal-sized districts, to leave one with only one member doesn't make sense. So I would expect sometime, as soon as everything solidified, that we would start a process to elect another member, just, so it'd be just the district, you know, downtown district. There is, in our operating assumption now also, is if anyone who is elected this April ends up being outside of their new district, they get to keep their seat representing that new, newly described district until the end of their term.
Okay, thank you, thank you a lot, Dave. Chief Weston?
Okay, how about that? Okay.
That's better.
Sorry about that. My second device trying to get talk. Anyway, I just wanted to thank Assemblymember Wellington and LaFrance for just advocating for us. It's been huge. And yeah, so just wanted to say thank you and we too will look forward to getting the contract signed. I do believe everyone's right. It is that answer of getting the line item there because that's the, that's been the sticking point of the request to try and renegotiate it all the time versus have a set amount. So thank you very much for everything and we, we are very grateful and humbled by the support.
Michelle, when we get a special SAP 12-digit line number for you, I'll make a button for you with that number.
Okay, good. And then I'll probably host everybody at the Gerda Brewery.
Thank you. Any other questions for Assemblymember Wellington? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. I don't, I did not see a school board representative here. But if you are here, can you let us know?
We have included a report from Kelly in the packet.
Okay. Thank you, Kyle. Okay, we will move on to item number three then, supervisors' reports. Rather go through everybody and we'll just ask open question. Do any of the supervisors have a, have a report to give the meeting? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So we'll go on to service provider reports. So we try and keep these to five minutes. Let's start with the fire department. Chief Weston?
Okay, I'll keep mine short. First, I just want to say thank you to everybody again for supporting us. I wanted to mention that big things are happening on Wednesday, December 22nd. Not only you have your board of supervisors meeting, but Santa is coming to town, doing a check ride here, starting at six o'clock at the resort. And then we will, we will be escorting him around the neighborhoods. So I'm super looking forward to that. And I'm hoping that even though if you're on teams, you'll be able to run outside and see Santa because he appreciates you and for everybody that does work on boards and commissions in Gerwood. I wanted to mention that we've had seven new members start. Super happy about that. And then, yeah, well, I've basically done two budgets because the, you know, with the EMS money for moving around a bit. So we are looking at a lot of training next year. We're going to get our firefighters through firefighter one. We've had a lot of sort of experienced people leave, but that's nothing new compared to what we're seeing nationally and in the state of Alaska. There's a lot of retention issues right now and a lot of challenges in recruiting volunteers. So trying to keep who we have and our crew is super, I would say positive, morale is high. And we've been going on about, we're over 400 calls so far. We had two today. We had two, we're averaging about two to five a day. So, you know, we're heading into our busy, busy season. So, yeah. So thank you for that. Just a reminder, check your smoke detectors and everything before you have lots of guests in the house. Thank you.
Sorry, I was speaking on mute. Any questions from the board or community members for the chief? I'm not seeing any, so we'll move on to the WPD, Chief Hache. I don't see him online. If Kyle, do you have any update?
Yeah, Chief couldn't make it tonight, but he did say that there'll be a fully staff for the New Year's and the holiday. And definitely will be increasing enforcement during the busy period here. And we'll discuss this a little bit later tonight, but they are working on a, we, with the Public Safety Advisory Committee have set up for a temporary impound lot for the evening of New Year's to control parking issues and other issues that require impound of vehicles. So that has all been constructed and ready for that and Chief's staff will be ready as well. So, so yep, they will be out there.
Thank you. Any questions on WPD, police coverage? And we'll be discussing some of this later, as Kyle said. Okay, let's move on to parks and rec. Kyle, do you want to give a quick summary?
Sure. As always, our packet's in the pack, in the packet here. I'll scroll down to it real quick. It's at the end, sorry. But basically, a couple of things we'll just highlight is we're still collecting food for the food pantry. There is a donation bin here in the library. As you enter, you can make a donation, drop off there and we'll get it up to them. We just ask for unexpired, unopened, non-perishable items. The COVID testing is still happening here till the end of the year. So over the next two weeks on Tuesdays and Saturdays, Tuesdays from four to eight and Saturdays from 12 to four, you can just pull up on the baseball field side and they'll come out to your car. So that will continue and those are free. With parks, we've been out there maintaining the garbage in the dog mits. We've been very busy with grooming and maintenance of the machines. The Nordic Club just bought a new machine, so that is coming online. And we really appreciate our volunteers out there getting those trails in action. And as well, we appreciate Aliaska Resort coming out and putting the first groom in on the 5K and pounding that surface in after all that snow we got. But it's coming together and this weekend they're really busy out there. So thank you to all our volunteers who make that happen every day out there. And on the road side of things, we've been busy with winter conditions. We've definitely been plowing and, and not a lot of sanding, which is a good thing for all of us. And we'll be out again tomorrow. We do ask, it's a Tuesday, which we hate to plow on Tuesdays because it's garbage day. But if your garbage is empty, could you please pull it in? It makes it much easier on the greater operator's life, trying to get, especially keep it a nice straight line going down the road. If you can pull your trash can in, we do try to get out and do it as we can, but it's a lot easier once it's done. So we'll be pushing away on that. Our budgets are all within line and we're looking at surpluses this year, which is good because it will be needed. And just a couple more weeks ago and we'll be done with this fiscal year. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Kyle. Amanda?
Thank you. Yep. Kyle, I was just wondering if there's a plan for COVID testing going forward after the new year?
We have, and Margaret might know more about this as she's talked with them directly, but we have not heard if they're going to continue into the new year the way they are now. But we have expressed to them that it would be great, especially with what's emerging now in the lower 48. So I think it's all about funding and hopefully they have the funding available to make it work and continue to do that for the community.
And that's funding from the municipality that's making that happen?
I believe so, or the state level, but I think it is coming from the municipality handles that ones.
So making sure that the assembly and mayor know that we appreciate that service would be good.
Yeah, we'll try to get confirmation if they're going to continue in the new year.
Great. And thank you so much for all the hard work and the lack of sanding makes the roads continue to be skiable. So it's awesome. Thanks.
Thanks. Did you have a, did you have a comment, Margaret? So you come off mute briefly on the testing side?
Yeah, I was just going to say that because Saturday is Christmas Day, I am feeling that it's probably not likely that Capstone is coming down to do their testing on that day. So the testing then is tomorrow, Tuesday from four to eight and the following Tuesday from four to eight. And then that's it for what is currently known. I have been requesting it of Capstone and then today I wrote them an email and asked who above them or, you know, what funding source could we contact? And I was also contacted by the school nurse who was inquiring about this too. So it's good to show some support for it. And once we know exactly where to direct that to, we'll start to do that as well.
Thank you. Amanda, do you have a follow up?
Just a follow up to Margaret. I did just look at Capstone and they are not going to be there on Saturday.
I think a surprise to nobody. Thank you. Any other questions from supervisors? Okay, I did see Mike Davidson's hands up earlier. If you had a question, Mike?
I think mine got answered. Thanks a lot, Mike.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the community? Okay, thank you very much. So we will now move on to the public comment period. So persons offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Would anyone like to make a public comment? Okay, I'm not seeing any, anyone with their hands up. So a last call in case anybody is on the phone. Just speak up. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, old business, item number five, which is an update on the October 2021 storm and financial discussion. Do you want to start this, Kyle?
Yes. So we had a special meeting with the GBOs because of our timeline and end of fiscal year to approve the expenses we have incurred so far associated with it. In the packet and what's on the screen here is just sort of a brief synopsis of what we've incurred so far. In direct construction and repair needs, we had $433,000 incurred there. And then in engineering inspection costs, we had about $50,000. So, you know, we're close to about $483,000 there spent so far on the response to the repairs from the Halloween weekend storm event. We definitely know there are lingering issues out there. In particular, they'll actually permit fix for Ruane Road. But in the spring, we have some things, we're estimating about $100,000 worth of repairs that we need to complete that, that winter didn't allow us to finish. But in the long term, and this will be a good item, I think should be brought up maybe by the delegates to the state. Discussion on Wednesday is we need probably 1.5 to 2 million dollars for a fish passage at Ruane. Basically, we need to rebuild that drainage correctly. What really showed in the storm was the weakness of that, those storm pipes. They're undersized and they're undersized for the storm events that we're starting to experience more often here in Gerwood. And, and they were not fish adequate. And so what needed, needs in the long term is a large box culvert that will give us a good passage, enough hydrology or hydro flow to go through there and also proper separation protection of that sewer line that lives above those pipes. So I think that is where we're going. The latest on the declaration is that all last week, I worked with the Emergency Operations Center, the EOC, at the municipality level. And we developed and completed the narrative for a declaration request to the state. That was sent over to the state. The state recognized what we sent over as a report of our damaged facilities or a damage assessment. And at this point in time, what I last I heard for update was that the state is waiting for the mayor or to request that the declaration be amended to include Gerwood. November 30th, I believe, the state of Alaska put a request to the governor to declare a declaration of emergency for the damages that happened on the Kenai Peninsula. And at this point in time, we've submitted a request for the mayor to amend that declaration and include the Gerwood area, basically from Indian down. And so at this point in time, we have not heard if that's been accepted and we have not heard if the administration has reached out to confirm that request. All that we've heard is that the state EOC has recognized the debt, damage assessment that has come from Gerwood associated with the storm. So we are hoping that all comes together because that will open us up for FEMA funding. If it all works out and possibly a reimbursement is not guaranteed, but our argument is strong, especially with matching up with the damage that happened on the peninsula at the same storm event. So that, that's where we stand at this point in time. We are, we just finished the survey, the post-construction survey of Ruane Road. There were guys out there walking in the creek bed, breaking ice, but we've got that all done. So we're well set up. If we do come across funding to go right into design and design that fish culvert and get to rebuilding that. And so we hope we can make that happen sooner than later. So that's where we stand at this point. Open for questions?
Okay, Kyle, I'll start my first question. I know we have it, we have an item on the agenda for tomorrow's municipal meeting to move certain amounts of money around. It looks like, when I go through the numbers, we have, we have got access to the remaining money in the dam bond. So it looks like we're effectively getting us about 165, 163,000 from general municipal, from area wide municipal funds to pay towards this. But I think that was it. I didn't see anything from AWU and otherwise I think the rest of it is, is on us.
Correct. So at this point in time, we will pay those costs upfront for AWU. And after the new year, the problem we've had in the last month is connecting the decision makers together. But after the new year, everybody should be back and we'll sit down with AWU to seek reimbursement. I think our associated cost there, if I have it right in this report, was close to $20,000 with them. So, you know, we had to make special arrangements to put a pipe in, put a temporary road in so a pump truck could get over, pump out the sludge from the waste transfer station come out. So we had additional work plus dealing with that sewer line. So, so we will be seeking that, which if we do get that reimbursement, then there'll probably be line, there'll be a journal entry that will send the money back into our accounts that, so we.
Okay, so again, based on the documentation which we provided for tomorrow's assembly meeting, it looks like we're dipping into our emergency budget reserve by about 120,000 and eating up all of our, the money we had allocated already for, or we partially allocated, we were going to put towards the fish passage replacements, so the culvert replacements on Aliaska Creek. And it also does not account for the additional money for the repairs that we deferred until spring. So it looks like we're going to be, you know, 100 and 200 and something thousand down in our emergency funds. Plus, we won't have money available for doing the culvert replacement on Aliaska Creek next year. Is that a good summary of where we would stand?
That's a good summary of where we stand. We definitely have some work to do in the first quarter revisions to figure out how to cover all these expenses. One plus is that we run surpluses on our budget this year. Those, those funds will fall back into our designated account. So hopefully that will soften our blow on what we have to replenish that emergency fund to. We're obligated by code to keep emergency fund at a certain amount. It's a percentage of what our overall budgets are for the year. So we will have to work out all those calculations and then look at what we want to do between our operating budgets and, and if additional taxation is needed to fill those completed funds.
Okay, and I have one final comment and then I'll, I'll move on to other supervisors. So the other thing, I spoke to the, the state Emergency Operations Center today and they confirmed that the governor did actually make a declaration of emergency for Kenai Peninsula. So that, that declaration was last Friday. They are still in the process of awaiting the governor's decision on whether he's going to approach the federal, approach FEMA and the president for, for, for effectively asking FEMA to pay, I think it's 75% of those costs. It's likely, but it's not, that step hasn't been done yet. And they acknowledged that they'd received, I think, a notice of damages from Gerwood. And I think that's been included in their provisional reports to FEMA. That doesn't mean we will get the money because we need the, we need a declaration of emergency to extend to the municipality of Anchorage. And at the moment, that's, that's, that's the area. We haven't heard anything at all from the mayor on, except I think via the newspaper. Okay, Jennifer, please, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted a little bit of clarification and I, Mike, I think you just kind of covered it. But just to be abundantly clear, am I hearing that we, in order to have even the potential to access emergency funds, we have to have the declaration from the mayor? Am I understanding that correctly?
The way it was explained to me, and I may have misunderstood it, but the way it was explained to me by the state and by the, by the municipality, by the municipality area Emergency Operations Center, is that in order to access state funds or federal funds, the governor has to include Anchorage. the governor has to include Anchorage within the declaration of emergency. And typically, the governor would do so if the municipality asked. It's unusual for the municipality not to ask. So while it's technically possible for the governor to extend it without the municipality of Anchorage asking, it would be an unusual circumstance if he was to do that. So it's not technically necessary for the muni to make the emergency declaration. It's just unlikely we would have an emergency declaration covering municipality if the mayor did not ask for that. That's my understanding. So it's not quite a simple yes or no answer.
Well, thank you. That that does help. And can I ask one follow up about that? I'm not quite clear on the timeline. Like, is there a drop dead deadline when we would need that to be made? When we would need the mayor to request that?
I did hear an answer. I did ask that very same question today to everybody I spoke to. No, there is not a, because the, because the damages are being included in the provisional report to FEMA, the door is kind of left ajar. There is not a deadline, so there's, there's no sort of, you know, statute of limitations or something for when the emergency declaration could be amended. There are practical limits, and one of those practical limits is when it comes to first quarter revisions in sort of February, March this year, we're going to have to find a way to replenish our emergency funds. So we may have to make actions then, which will be, and the actions would be different if we thought it was a likely repayment from either the state or federal funds. And if we know there, if we do not see any way of them being repaid, then we will have to make actions ourselves to repay that. So effectively, you know, something needs to be done by, you know, the first quarter next year. So within the first quarter next year. So we have a couple of months effectively. That's my understanding of the situation. Again, this is all very new to me, so I may have misunderstood something. If anyone else can clarify it, welcome. Brianna has her hand up, and so does John, and then Michelle. Brianna.
Thank you, Mike. I'm okay with John Wedleton going first. Might have something to.
Oh, sure. I think the situation is just as Mike said, I just puzzled why the city hasn't asked for emergency declaration. But as we've emailed, I'm going to pull that one item on the, you know, moving the funding for your repairs. And I've got to note to ask the administration at that point, you know, what the rationale is on not doing the emergency declaration or not requesting an emergency declaration from the governor. So we'll learn tomorrow.
Thank you, John. I think that'd be very welcome because we haven't received, as far as I'm aware, we haven't received any response to our letters or other requests from the municipality. Brianna, do you want to?
Sure. Yes, thank you, Mike, and thank you, John. I think it would be in the citizens' best interest for Gerwood and the municipality to pull the item and discuss the funds that are potentially available. I also was curious toward Kyle for his meeting with AWU. In 2006, there was a drainage study, so I know we're 15 years into that. And then 2012, the Water Master Plan was, was predicting population growth and needs for increasing water. And if AWU in their strategic plan says they are responsive to the needs of the community, if they're able to give more funds because they're an integral section to get Ruane built back up to withstand future, future population and the roadbed for that as well as the sewer. That's all.
Sure, I can try to address that. I guess your question was, is can AWU provide a larger reimbursement to, to the damages?
And, and in the future, if they have in the 20-year plan, since we're well into that, we're halfway in, that if building up the roadbed is part of that, that they could allocate more funds toward Ruane.
Oh, for, yeah, I can ask those questions when we meet with them.
Thanks.
Thank you. John, I think you're still in the queue. Did you have further comments?
No, sorry, go ahead and I have to figure out how to lower my hand. Thanks.
Thank you. Michelle, Chief Weston.
Okay, yeah, I just to follow up with what you were saying. Yep, correct in your analogy, usually a local government has to prove, has to state that their capacity to deal with it themselves internally has exceeded. And so that's sometimes a test that's put in there. But I mean, there have been many past instances of the municipality requesting funds. One of them would be the windstorm, windstorm events that have happened in the past. Other places to look at other examples would be storm surge funds that were received and soured. Whittier, I believe, has applied for them before too. So, you know, these disaster declarations not unusual in the state of Alaska.
Thank you, Chief Weston. I think we had, do we have one in 2012 or thereabouts for the flooding event that affected the runway as well, I think, at Gerwood Airport?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, that's, that's a state facility, obviously, in this case. Representative Kaufman.
Yes, thanks. I just want to let you know, I checked and the invite went to Brianna and you, Mike. So that was the two points of contact that we had with you guys for this roundtable.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. And we may have some follow up with you as well, depending on how things go with the municipality tomorrow. Thanks. Any other questions or comments from supervisors or the public on this item? So I just want to clarify, Kyle, we're not, at the moment, this is a report on where we are. It's not a request for any specific action.
No, and what we will be doing over this next 10 days is paying those invoices as they were approved at the special meeting. So Amanda, I'll probably be sending you a quick review on those invoices, just asking for your okay to pay. And then we'll get those paid before end of year. And and then what I'll be doing in the first part of the year with the board is looking at how we replenish these funds and prepare for first quarter revisions.
Thank you. And again, thank you to the, to both you, Kyle, and the contractor and everyone else who's been involved in this process. The, you know, we had a very short window to do the repairs before the weather closed in, and I think a lot, a lot got done very efficiently. Thank you. Okay, seeing no further comments, we will move on to item number six. Proposed changes to GBOS rules and procedures to allow virtual hybrid or in-person meetings regardless of public health emergency status. Jennifer, you were taking this.
Yes, this is a little bureaucratic thing we need to get out of the way. We are, have, we're just talking in the joint Manjuice and GBOS meeting about possibility of hybrid meetings for the community, but we have to straighten out the bylaws. So it's listed in the meeting packet. The main thing is H, sorry, I don't have the whole. Under a quorum, the quorum will be defined rather than a majority of GBOS attending in person. It's three or more GBOS members attending either in person or remotely. And then the wording for the next section is taken largely from the changes in the municipal code and lays out what it means to be meeting in person versus remotely. And basically, what we're trying to do is give ourselves the ability to meet remotely. We're not making the decision for the community. We just need our bylaws to reflect that as a possibility before we can really do either virtual hybrid or anything else. And I think that's it.
I forgot to unmute. Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? I'm seeing your questions. So, so just to clarify, so this is mostly incorporation of the, the recent change in municipal code into our bylaws? And then some other associated cleanup, is that correct?
Yes. And then just to be clear, I'm working with Margaret on a few little clerical cleanups, but they are truly clerical. So this is, this is what we're looking at now because the municipal code language was better than what I was coming up with on my own.
Okay, so is this, is this the first time this, this exact change has been presented? Because we have this rule that we have to present it and publish it for 30 days before we vote. Is that where we are now? So this is the first, this is the first version of this version or the first presentation of this version?
This, this exact language is different than what was introduced last time.
Okay, great. So if I understand this correctly, then we can't vote on it tonight. We would have to count 30 days from today and vote on it at the next meeting. Is, is that correct? I'm going to get staff to give me their interpretation.
You're correct. So this, this would be basically the public introduction tonight, and then you can vote on it at the next meeting. But along this item, and I don't want to push past this, along this item, I do have a request for technology in order to meet these requirements.
Okay, let's, let's just continue a discussion on the actual changes in language here. So if there's any comments on that from the board, Brianna.
Thank you, Mike. I was going to thank Jennifer for her work on this. And so far, I haven't seen anything that I have a question on. Still reading.
I do have to really just quickly say that it's, it's Margaret, sorry. It was Margaret that did a lot of this. So thanks there.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the change in language for our bylaws or for our operating procedures? And if not, we will move over to Kyle, and Kyle, you can present the recommendations for changes in equipment.
Correct. And let me see, Margaret, did that make it into this packet?
Yeah, if you scroll up.
Oh, I scrolled.
You're almost there. It's before the rules.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
There, whoops.
So what we are requesting of the GBOS tonight is funding. And requesting not to exceed of $6,000, right here, I have it lined item out is 5,500, but there might be some unknowns. But basically, we're, we're primarily interested in the first four items, which would be a video concert conferencing equipment and, and camera to set us up to be ready for hybrid when we do return to that setting. And what's meant by hybrid, if people understand it, is basically there is a movement that once we return to in-person, that we continue to have an online option for those who want to attend online and attend the meetings. And so in order to do that, we need to solve the video conferencing issue that we're having and, and get it figured out. Hey, just real quick, I'm going to pause here. Sounds like we had a power outage. Is, is that, is everybody out? Is, can anybody maybe raise their hand, let us know they're still there?
I'm here. This is Brianna.
I saw Mike drop off.
We lost Mike. So Brianna, you, you might have to take the helm here.
Okay, and I see Bernske's hands up and got an echo real quick.
Yeah.
Got a few hands up.
Okay, so it looks like we still have some, we have a quorum, that's my biggest thing. Guy, you're here. Jennifer, are you still here?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Amanda, are you still here?
Yes, I am. Our power blip, and I live a couple doors from Mike, so I'm sure.
Okay, all right. So Mike will probably come back on. I'll continue on and then we'll catch Mike up when he comes in. But we still have a quorum to maintain the meeting. So yeah, we're looking at buying this equipment to, to get us established and test it and work it out. You know, our biggest conflict is the, is the room itself. It's a large, high-ceiling room. We have an air handler that works in there. It creates a lot of white noise. And, and also having the visuals, so people who are online can see what's going on in the room. And that, so we feel that this equipment would be the first step forward to start working out those issues. We have, over during the pandemic, we have established a way to turn off the air handler. So hopefully, we can knock out that white noise. But same time, people like to have the air handler on in there in the meetings aspect. So we'll need to work through all that. But in order to find out, we have to make the investment in the technology to see how we can make this all work to work out. So we do have on there requests for $3,000 for a new LCD display, which would be probably a very large size TV. At this point in time, we're not looking to buy that, but if we find that we need it going forward, excuse me, LCD projector. Our current one is definitely aging out, and we won't be prepared to purchase a new one if we need it. So, so that's what we're looking for is approval tonight for $6,000.
Thank you, Kyle. And just to follow up, someone said there's an unplanned outage on the mine roads that's being addressed. But this other power outage is separate, maybe? Any questions from the board to begin on this item? Since we did hear it at six o'clock's meeting. Guy, thank you.
Yep, I'll just bring that up again. So you're working with the, with the radio there to, they can work with this equipment as well?
Yeah, probably at this point in time, we'll probably work with the radio station to, you know, continue to set up. If we do go back to traditional and meeting, we'll work, work out if we can work this technology. You know, for right now, like, for example, the radio station can tune into the team's meeting here and then broadcast that through that. Now, the clarity may not be as good with this technology, but we will have to learn that as we go, so we'll have to experiment with them. We may have to try something else with the mic pickup on these different things. But yeah, we'll work with the fire radio station to see if we can make our technology work for them, or we just continue to do what we did with, do with them.
All right, thanks.
Just wanted to interrupt briefly to say I'm back online. I'm listening on the phone now. We had a power outage.
Okay, got you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Kyle just presented the hybrid meeting equipment totals and is looking for a motion if no one else has any comments from the board.
Can I just, can I just ask one question? Of Kyle, do you, would it be valuable to, or should we, would you mind if we split out the, the projector from the initial request and just focus on the audio? Or do you think it's necessary to, we should really focus on, we should really replace that at the same time?
Well, I don't think it's necessary to place it right now, but I would like to have the approval in case we need to as we work this whole system together. So I don't have to go back through approval process again. But if the board feels more comfortable with removing it, we could do that this time.
If I can be recognized by the chair?
Yes, please, Mike. Go ahead.
So in that case, I, I would make a motion that we approve the purchase of the equipment listed for $5,568.43.
The motion has been made. Do I hear a second?
I'll second. This is Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda. Any further discussion?
Quick question. Kyle, did you recommend a full $6,000 as opposed to the line item there?
We did. I, Mike, you might have missed this. I did recommend rounding up to 6,000 in case we had some issues that we weren't aware of. You know, we're going off our estimates today and pricing can change overnight. So we just wanted to give a little more room in there.
I'm happy to, I'm happy if the second agrees to amend my motion to be $6,000.
Amanda, do you agree?
Yes, I agree. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other comments from the public? I don't see any hands before we put this item to a vote. Shelley, go ahead.
Go ahead. I did just offer up by email to Kyle and Margaret, I have an 86-inch. LCD View Sonic that I could journal entry over to them when I figure out the, the cost. If you want an 86 inch View Sonic, Kyle.
Okay. Well, well, thank you. I'll, I'll take a look at it.
Okay. We could cut you a deal, probably.
Thanks, Shelley. Anyone else? And it sounds like Kyle, that, uh, if you could, if you've got the approval that you ordered the 2,500 first and then the LCD display second.
Correct. If I can avoid the LCD, we will, we will do that, but, uh, we definitely want, we know it's a factor in what we're doing.
Okay. I'll call for a vote then, Kyle. Voice vote.
Sure.
Roll call.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
And the motion passes 5-0.
Okay, we're on to old business number seven. Discuss status of MOA GVSA 2022 budget concerns, area-wide EMS contribution shortfall, alcohol tax allocation, accessibility for Girdwood service providers and residents, and additional tax to replace funds used for storm repair.
Uh, I quickly touch on this. We, we've discussed the majority of this, but basically, uh, as we heard tonight, the alcohol tax allocation in the area-wide EMS, contribution, um, it passed the assembly, um, with the veto or ride at a recent meeting. The checks haven't come yet, so until they come, we will keep an eye out for them and keep you updated when those might come. And then the additional tax to replace, uh, funds used for the storm repair. Uh, we will table that and we'll definitely discuss that with our first quarter visions. And as more clarity comes with possible reimbursement from a declaration for, for the, for the storm damage. So, so at this point in time, that's where we're standing.
Thank you, Kyle. Are there any comments or questions from the board? I don't see any hands. Mike, do you have anything extra?
No, I think we covered it earlier. Thank you.
Yep. Okay. And if anyone is not muted, please mute. Go to item number eight, agenda item LUC 2111-07 USDA USF or Service Request for LUC Recommendation of GBOS Resolution of Support for the USDA. Uh, I'm losing the screen. Sorry. I'll read my screen.
Sorry, go back.
No, no, it's all right. It's, it's better on my screen. Acquisition of 8.05 acres of land at 144 Forest Station Road, which is currently leased from HLB. Tim Sharnan presenting. And I'll recognize you, Tim. If he's here.
I, I am here.
Okay, great. And, uh, I think you have, you have the floor for 20 minutes or less. Be great. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. And Kyle, for a backdrop for this, it would be great if you could, uh, scroll down to the aerial photo of the, uh, site. Yep, there we are with that, that map. That's great. Members of the board and members of the public, uh, thank you for this opportunity to share this, uh, proposal with you. My name is Tim Sharnan. For those of you whom I have not met, I'm the district ranger for the US Forest Service, uh, stationed here at the Glacier Ranger District, here at the Glacier Ranger Station. And that's what I want to, uh, talk about tonight. The location of our ranger station here at the, uh, entrance to the Girdwood Valley, uh, is on a leased site. Uh, we leased this property from Heritage Land Bank, and we've done that since, uh, 1988. Our lease will be expiring in 2023, and we would like to purchase the property from HLB. And we are seeking a, a resolution of, of support to, to do that. A, a brief, uh, history about the, the forest service in our community. Uh, the forest service, uh, has been here for, for quite some time. Our, our forest began, uh, in its present form and over a hundred years ago. Uh, we are a forest reserve, uh, reserved for the protection of salmon. We were the first salmon, uh, forest in, in the country. Our, our, uh, our priorities are, are still focused on maintaining that the resources on the forest, especially, uh, providing, uh, critical and sustainable salmon habitat, but also in, in accessing the, the world-class recreation opportunities on the forest that serve our, our businesses that rely on those activities. The, and as well as the member, members of our community who are passionate, uh, about recreation and, and access to the, to the forest. Although the forest has been here for quite some time, um, our ranger station at this site is relatively new. As I mentioned, in 1988, we had the opportunity to move out to this site, uh, when the Girdwood School moved to its present location. Uh, this, this particular lot, the zoned, uh, uh, institution and parkland, general institution and parkland. And we were invited to, uh, come out and, uh, build our ranger station, uh, which we did. Uh, we've, uh, been very, uh, uh, worked very hard, uh, since that time, uh, in fulfilling our mission. Our mission of caring for the land and, and serving, uh, serving our communities. We have worked steadfastly, uh, with, uh, both Girdwood and, and area nonprofits and other organizations that, that share our common conservation and education and, and regi, and educational, uh, goals. We support over 50 businesses, uh, from our community that rely on the, the resources on the Chugatch National Forest. We help, uh, achieve our mission by providing access to the forest through our trails and our cabins and our wilderness programs. And we meet our mission by providing information, not just about the forest, but our community. And in providing both educational and safety information so that people can make good, informed choices about where to go and what to do on the Chugatch National Forest, uh, even in the winter time through the services of our avalanche information center. Although we've been really proud of the, the successes in fulfilling our mission as we've been here the last three decades and we're inspired by some of the, the public comment, uh, we heard from, uh, members of the public and our partner organizations at the land use committee. We feel like we can do an even better job of fulfilling our mission of caring for the land and serving people with a, a long-term, stable presence in the community. Meeting our mission is the most important reason why we wish to, to purchase the, the property from HLB. We feel that a more secure, long-term presence helps the forest service be more responsive to the priorities and needs of the local community. When our employees live in the community and when we are in, and when we are engaged with some of our, our closest and most passionate users of the forest, this helps us align our forest programs and resources with the needs of our community and the needs of our partners. It also helps us how, uh, it also helps us understand how the community wants the, our public forest, uh, to be managed. In addition to a better meeting our mission, we have some practical reasons why we wish to purchase the property. And we feel like those, uh, additional reasons help align with some other community needs. Uh, purchasing the, the property from HLB should provide HLB with, with some revenue for, to meet, uh, some capital investment needs in the community focused on other, other, uh, community priorities. We feel that, uh, in that, that we will be able to better invest in this site, particularly in the, the possibility of providing, uh, additional housing for our seasonal and our permanent employees. Uh, we feel that this could have a, a, not just serve our employees, uh, better, but also decrease the, the, the overall a demand, uh, for housing in the community and also allow us to potentially partner with organizations in the community also faced with the, uh, uh, housing shortage. Examples in the past have included our partnerships with SCA and Challenge Alaska to, to use our, our bunkhouse facilities. And we feel that the public access that would be gained with purchase of the property would be a significant achievement and investment for the community. At this location in, in Girdwood, uh, the ranger station would be able to continue to serve, to providing, uh, public access both to the Gird to Bird Trail and to the Iditarod National Historic Trail. So in better meeting our mission and in better meeting the needs of the community, we, we seek a, a resolution of, of support for that, uh, purchase. And I'll just like to, to pause there for, for, uh, more information, any more information that I can provide, uh, to the community.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, firstly, any questions from the board? Guy?
Yeah. Um, thanks, Tim, for taking time out to present this. Um, just curious, your, I, I didn't really see a, a footprint or for the development of that lot and your long-term plans. Do you know, are you, like, access to Monarch Mine Road? Is that in the long-term plan? Or will you just continue to, um, have the one, the one entrance there to the, the front of your facility?
We would, uh, our pla, our plans, Guy, would be to do a, a site development plan for the, uh, site. What we're mostly focused on are improving, uh, accessibility requirements at the ranger station, potentially some office addition to the ranger station and potentially some, some, um, additional warehouse space as well as the, the housing that I mentioned. Access to the site, we feel sufficient with our existing access. So there's, there's no plans for additional access, um, out to, uh, Monarch Mine.
Thank you.
Next, Michelle. Chief Weston?
Oh, I just wanted to speak in support of this proposal. Um, as you know, we work very closely with the forest service, uh, on emergency rescue situations, and it's very handy to be able to just drive two minutes and, uh, see Tim in person, right? Uh, and, uh, very handy to have, you know, when we have additional people there, that's a good thing. Also having bunk space if it couldn't, if it's not being used in an emergency situation, that provides an opportunity to the community. So, um, I would just like to speak in support of this. Um, I think it's a great idea to keep, um, the forest service here, uh, on that location. Obviously, I was many, many years ago at the beginning of time, uh, a land manager for the Heritage Land Bank and managed Girdwood Lands. And, uh, I know from that period of time that they were a, a good tenant of the land. Uh, and then additionally, as speaking, I take my other hats off and speaking just as a mine road neighbor, they've always been a good neighbor in the community. And, um, I know a number of us in the, in the mine roads have had forest service employees living, um, living with us. So, uh, just want to speak in support of that.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, any other comments from the board? And thank you, Tim, for including this time the present value scenarios. And in our packet tonight are 18 extremely supportive letters. So if the rest of the hands that are up are, uh, comments, I could start with those and just please, uh, be mindful of the time tonight. And I'll start with Janine. A question or comment?
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to comment tonight. My name is Janine Hutchins, and I'm a resident of Girdwood. And I'm also the general manager of Alaska Wildland Adventures, a longtime local business. And it's really a pleasure to have the opportunity to share my support and Alaska Wildland Adventure's support of the Glacier Ranger District's effort to secure a permanent presence in the community of Girdwood. The conservation and protection of Alaska's wild spaces really holds a permanent position in the mission of Alaska Wildland Adventures. And our greatest work is to share the importance of stewarding the land with our, our guests. And while we try to make it look effortless, we know that, uh, there's a lot of work behind the scenes. When our guests hike well-maintained trails and enjoy well-maintained fisheries and view wildlife in their natural habitats, they see beautiful Alaska. That's the, they don't see all the permitting behind the scenes and all the, the, the trail crew work and the housing of the trail crew and the equipment needed. Um, so the scope of what it takes to take care of these resources is just so immense. Um, but we, we see that, uh, the importance of the forest service in our community. Alaska Wildland Ventures was adopted, uh, or was founded in 1977, and we adopted our current name in 1987, the year before the ranger district moved here. And many of our past and present employees have spent seasons working for the district as well. In our tenure here, we've seen the growth of the district's visitor centers, forest stewardship, local business support, community investment in our programs, as well as, being active community members. Many of the staff that work at the forest are, are a big part of our community. And so we wholeheartedly support the site acquisition in order to secure the best foundation for the district to continue and expand its important work in our community. And, uh, we're really lucky to have the forest here, and I really thank you for the time for expressing Alaska Wildland Adventures and my support as a resident of this acquisition. Thank you.
Thank you for your participation, Janine. Uh, Jennifer?
Um, yes, uh, to, to the chair, I'm wondering if, um, it would be appropriate to make a motion at this point that we accept this and, uh, submit a, uh, sorry, a recommendation of support.
So in number eight, you could read the, uh, formal, formal motion, Jennifer, and then we'll look for a second.
Sure. Am I reading it from the agenda?
If that helps you phrase it better.
Sure. Yes. Uh, I will go straight with that. Uh, I recommend that the GBOS supports the, uh, res, sorry, resolution of support for the USDA USFS acquisition of 8.05 acres of land at 144 Forest Station Road, currently leased from HLB.
Thank you. Mike?
I, I was gonna second this, and I know traditionally we, um, we would read out the resolution, but, uh, it is included in the packet. And given that those of you who still have power are gonna lose it in a few hours, um, I'm wondering if we could skip the reading of it, um, for the purposes of expediency.
I would rule that we avoid reading and use the time, uh, right here and having it here in the agenda, in the packet, sorry, in the packet. So that is a second. And, uh, any other discussion from the board? On this motion. Okay. Kyle, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Sure. Uh, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes, in support.
Mike Edgington?
Uh, yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Uh, that motion for resolution of support passes 5-0.
Thank you, Kyle. Thanks for the motion. Thank you, everyone. And, uh, Tim, all the letters are in the packet. And anyone that was ready to speak, you did a great job at land you speaking to. So I think that we can move on to new business. Is that fair, Kyle?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Sorry. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. New business number 10, discuss agenda for MOA GBOS quarterly meeting scheduled for January 24th at 4:00 PM. Anchorage based versus Teams TBA.
So we are setting up for the So we are setting up for the quarterly meeting with the municipal manager and staff and looking for any agenda items. We will also address this at your January meeting. But if you have any items tonight you would like us to put on there, we can start making note of those.
Mike, go ahead.
This may be obviously resolved before then, but I would suggest we discuss the funding for, or any repayments for the emergency we had following the October storm. And also the funding, or, you know, plans for funding the replacement of the bridge, or the rather replacement of the culvert, the long-term solution.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike. Guy, your hand is up.
Yeah, just, you know, just keep the fire department contract, you know, front and center too, and discuss that while we're there.
Sure, yep, we can make that work out. And by that time, we should hopefully know when all the payments are coming for the fire department. You know, last year, they got paid everything upfront. We don't know if that'll be the same this year or not. So that'll be a good topic.
Okay. Kyle, will police be on that? Do we need to discuss an update on police contract?
At this point in time, I would probably say no, until we know more clarity on the different options. The thing I will be presenting to police is the beginning of analysis on the different options for policing for Gerwood.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer?
Similar question, do we need to revisit the alcohol tax question?
We could bring that up at the meeting. And I think one thing we'll need to discuss at the next Public Safety Advisory Meeting is how we distribute that funding, which will be a reimbursement to Whittier if their officers attend that training. So we will probably have more clarity on that coming out of that public safety meeting.
Thanks, Kyle. I think those are great. Anything else for suggestions? Please raise your hand. This is the meeting with municipality in January. Mike?
Yeah, I just wondered if perhaps Margaret can remind us of the other topics we discussed at our last quarterly meeting, just as a reminder.
In October, we discussed the update with Fire Department EMS contract, requesting an upgrade, an update regarding the alcohol tax. HLB items were the industrial park sale of lots in Phase 1, what was going on with Phase 2, and the residential 2021 project, which is Fulton Hills. We discussed the cemetery project and possible cemetery bonding and Glacier Valley Transit.
Thank you. Can I suggest we put HLB topics on the agenda as well?
Sure.
Exact ones to be determined, but just as a placeholder.
And similarly, as a placeholder, would you like to put something about the Glacier Creek Bridge that we're going to be seeing a presentation on here in a minute?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret, for those suggestions. And thanks, Mike, for reminding us about October quarterly meeting. Anything else before we move on? Number 11, Gerwood Trails Committee Agenda Item LUC 2112-05, Initial Presentation of Concept Plan for New Bridge Over Glacier Creek, Seeking GBOS Resolution of Support for the Project. Kyle?
Yeah, let me just scroll down here to it real quick. So many letters of support.
Pretty dense.
Dense. Did I just skip it all? Keep going, sorry. Okay, here we are. I gotta make it smaller so we can see it. Here it comes. Okay, so this is our third presentation. We have presented it at Gerwood Trails Committee and Land Use last week. And this is the Trail, Winter Creek Trail Bridge Concept for Crossing Glacier Creek. And to be straightforward, it's the concept for replacing the hand tram as linking this trail back together again. And just quickly, it's been well researched and documented and now summarized that the hand tram will not reopen to many different reasons, but particular costs and operations. And so we are now aggressively looking at ways to link the trail back together and provide a safe passage for trail users. And what I'll present here is the beginning of that concept. What we are looking at is a conceptual bridge design that will cross Glacier Creek in the same corridor that the hand tram is currently in. So where the trail comes and meets there, trying to keep that trail and now putting a bridge in its place to cross over. And so we are looking at a suspension bridge, which is a unique design for crossing over it. And the reason for it is we're trying to find a design that balanced costs, function, and aesthetics, and long-term maintenance to Gerwood residents and its visitors. And so, and at the same time, provides a unique experience when crossing Glacier Creek that the hand tram did provide for users going across. And what we have come up with is a suspension bridge that would be about five feet wide, a walking surface. It would be made of galvanized steel and would have aesthetics that relate to Gerwood. That galvanized steel would look very similar to the tram that serves the top of the mountain here at Aliaska Resort in that aspect. And the other aspect about it is trying to reuse the existing structures that are out there for the hand tram to help us with the construction of the suspension bridge going across the creek. And so with that, we've come up with a conceptual design that sort of meets those requirements and guidelines. And one thing that would enhance the area, and we feel is it would be very needed, is an interpretive display that highlighted the hand tram. And so repurposing materials from the hand tram terminals and the hand tram itself and developing a interpretive center there that would have the hand tram on a suspension cable in that aspect. Our intended design for construction is taking place now. We've gotten to what you say a 15% design on it. And we wanted to bring it to the public to garner support for this concept design before we move forward. I'd like to recognize our partners on this, which is Anchorage Parks and Rec. They have, through their own funding, established this design work using area-wide funds that they have available, mostly leftover from COVID funding, and have been able to get us started on this path and are a financial partner. If we do move towards construction, they can provide a substantial amount for us to help with that construction. As well, R&amp;M and Betisworth North, there are term contractors who are helping us with this design work. R&amp;M doing the structural and actual design of it. And Betisworth are really coordinating the project for us in that aspect. We do feel that the construction price on this in early estimates will be 1.2 million. A cylinder bridge was built up in Denali State Park. It's a suspension bridge. And so they give, and that was done within the last three or four years. And so we have reference of a recent-priced bridge here in Alaska, which is really handy, as well as construction designs. And we feel interpretive display would be about $50,000 to include there. So 1.2, 1.3 million is the beginning estimate. As we go further into it, we engage a estimating company, HMS, that will help us to really fine-tune those estimates going forward. But these pitches here kind of give us sort of what inspired our design work and our concept as we went forward, looking at around the community. This is a conceptual drawing of the bridge. And so this gives you an understanding of what it'd be. Basically, it would be an arch-type suspension bridge. It would have a metal grate floor to it, a walkway that went across that wood. And it would try to use the abutments on each side of the trail, what we refer to as the Aliaska Hotel side and the Crow Creek roadside of the trail, which is the west side for Crow Creek and the east side for the Aliaska Hotel. And it would be directly in alignment where the hand tram goes across now. It would be a very sturdy-built bridge. One of my guidelines is that I want a very solid bridge. It's gonna last a very long time, 50 to 100 years, and easily, and with minimal maintenance required. And I think they definitely embrace that as they've gone through the design process. The bridge would have suspension anchors on each side. These just give you an idea where they would be. But we do have bedrock to work with on the hotel side and more organic material to work on that side. So they would have to work that out as they work the geotech through, once they get into the full design out phase. The approach to each side of the bridge would be ramped. So you would have ramped approaches on each side. We do intend to make this ADA accessible because you never know where the bridges go. And also, you never know where the equipment that can help people get out to enjoy this bridge would be available. That's improving daily. And so we definitely want to build it for the future. We have had an initial meeting with the US Forest Service and the US Forest Service engineer. And their response was positive to this bridge. And they're on board to be in the design process with us. The ultimate goal for my department would be that the US Forest Service would accept this design and then in the long run, take over ownership and maintenance of it. And as they already are maintaining and managing the Winter Creek Trail that comes in each direction to it. So ultimately, we would hope the US Forest Service could take over the maintenance and ownership of this bridge for the future as it's part of their Iditarod Corridor. And also recognizing that it would be an important segment of the long trail that would come through our valley. And this connection would be really important in that way. So sliding down here, this is the conceptual of it. It's actually a picture of a bridge in Europe, suspension bridge in Europe, that actually fits nicely into our environment, very similar in the way it would look. And this one is not the arching aspect, but it still gives you an idea of where it would look like. The one thing that we did show here is just to give some options is the engineer suggested that we should just consider maybe using treated timbers for our uprights there on the suspension, for the columns or the posts, or use galvanized. I'll be honest with you, I am a full supporter of galvanized. You even heard that from the US Forest Service engineer. It just means less worry and maintenance for the future. You know, our engineer did point out that the treated posts would be similar to telephone poles. They'd be strong enough, and telephone poles have definitely survived out in the elements. But we just really like the full galvanized look, knowing for the strength and durability for the long term. We know how, you know, Gerwood is always trying to take back the wood. Down below is some pictures of different railing systems that we would use for the approach. So as you walk towards the bridge, there would be railings that kind of direct you right into the walkway, you know, and prevent you from maybe walking around and going towards the cliffs. Just gives, keeps people channelized so that also we don't have a lot of extra degradation going on around the facility and people are just going onto the bridge and off. We would try to, and I would suggest that we would try to reuse the metal panels that are out there now that work as fall guards on the tram terminals, repurpose those into the design as much as possible. And then within the bridge itself, we would use stainless steel web meshing out there, which would basically go along the rails. And then on top of that, there'd be handrails that would also be available for hikers as they cross and have additional sense of security as they walk across with those handrails. But that web meshing would be behind it to prevent fall from that. Originally, it was discussed that maybe we would make that web mesh 84 inches tall, so it provides a lot of protection. But we've received a lot of feedback that people will rather see it down at 52 inches, which allows you to look over and get an unobstructed view. And also for wind drag, there's just less that the wind is catching on as it comes down valley in that aspect. So we're leaning more towards that shorter handrail height than web mesh height there. So that gives you a little option there. These are a little bit more of the technical drawings. As I said, these are initial, but it starts to give you an idea of what it looks like. And within this drawing, it also gives you the understanding of the fact why we have to move the terminal roofs that are out there right now, or the shelters. They conflict too much with the design of the bridge and the wires out there. So we would remove those. But the idea is to repurpose one of these structures and turn it into the interpretive center for the hand tram, which would be on the Crow Creek side or the west side of the terminal. And then we would remove that. But as you can see, we're trying to reuse the abutments. We may have to build onto those or do some reconstruction with them. But we would definitely try to reuse as much as we could out there in that aspect. So this gives you an idea there. And then you can see how tall the suspension structures are. And, you know, they would be almost 35 feet tall there as comparisons to what the hand tram terminals are like now. So quite a bit taller there, just to make sure that wire gets up high enough to support that bridge. And then, oh, didn't have a cross view here, but that just gives you this idea how they conflict also with the terminals there in that aspect. So that is kind of our introduction. We will be seeking support from GBOS at the next, their meeting in January. And we do have the support from all three different, from the two different committees and GBOS. We will move forward on the design and especially work with the US Forest Service to see if we can come up with a partnership that works for everybody. Open up the questions.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions from board members? I don't see any hands. Yes, Mike?
Yeah, Deanne, what looked to be the range of different potential funding sources for the design work? Not construction, but the design work itself?
Well, we would work, right now, we are working with Anchorage Parks and Rec and the funding that we've recognized there through remaining COVID funds to work that design work out. And that 1.2 million does include the soft costs for design work and permitting in it. And so, you know, at that point in time, we would work through and complete the design work through that funding source. And then what's remaining, and then we would come to GBOS to match funds, plus look at possible other funding sources to go for construction at that point. But once we complete all that work with the design, then we will know exactly what we have remaining and what we need to get to be prepared to go out for construction bids.
So how far do you think the funding sources you've identified already would take us in design? And we're talking like 35% or something like that?
We, with the money that we have available right now, we can finish design all the way to 100%, no problem. And then probably still have a sniff of funding left to put towards construction.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions from the community? And I'll start with Margaret.
Margaret, you're muted.
Sorry, I was just trying to bring attention to Chris Beck. I wasn't sure if he could get his hand up.
I do see Chris's hand up, so thank you. Chris, go ahead, please. You're muted. Looks like. I can come back. Oh, there you go.
Okay, there I am. Excuse me. I, I think maybe I unmuted and it got reversed. Anyway, I, I could probably talk for about a week without interruption about the long trail and I'll, I'll try to restrain myself. Maybe the, the one or two-minute overview. If it's helpful, I do have a one-page summary in front of me. I don't know if, if it's convenient or possible to share the screen, but either way, so the, the long trail is a concept that's emerged over the last couple of years, largely coming out of work by Alaska Trails. It's a statewide nonprofit. And as a person who's done a whole lot of planning work in Alaska over the last 20 or 30 years, I don't think I've ever been associated with an idea that has been so broadly and widely supported. We've got resolutions of support from local governments, from business organizations, from the landowners along the length of the route. The concept is at, at the broadest ambitious level to provide a, a connection from Seward through Gerwood to Fairbanks that would be in the spirit of like the Appalachian Trail or the Pacific Crest Trail. And we are now at a point of, I think, being pretty confident that a lot of people like it and we're at the more interesting part of actually securing funding, securing specific routes. And the piece that you folks are now talking about is, is an example of a, of really valuable little connection, little compared to a 500-mile trail, but really a key piece. The proposed connections from Seward up through Gerwood to Eagle River follow the route of the existing southern trek of the Iditarod Trail and go up. Ultimately, the hope, Tim Sharnan could give you the details of getting through 20 Mile Valley, up over beautiful Berry Pass, down the hill and almost towards the resort. But then if this bridge was back in place to cross that and then continue up to the Crow Pass Trail and over to Eagle River. So maybe I stop there. I guess I would say that with regard to the questions of funding, we are seeing real interest in funding from Congress, from the legislature, from some nonprofit foundations. And, and it would be great to work together without making any promises. I don't have a big checkbook, but some of our partners seem to, to assist you in trying to raise funds for this bridge. That's a kind of a bold statement on my part. I don't want to promise doing that, but we are seeing a lot of interest in the concept of this trail as a value for residents, for health, for visitors, for the economy. So I think it's a great project. We very much support it. We would like to work together.
Thank you, Chris. Tim Sharnan.
Thanks. I, I just wanted to thank Kyle in particular for his leadership and the community for their leadership in moving forward with a, a solution for the, for the crossing. And Kyle captured it really well. We, the Forest Service are gonna work as hard as we can to get on board with this design. It's a unique design. I'm hoping that we can get there. So as he said, we can take over future maintenance in it. And also that would make it easier for us as Chris Beck just alluded to, to, to making a federal investment in the, in the implementation as well. So, thank you, Kyle.
Thanks, Tim. I am seeing the same hands up. Chris, your hand's still up in case any other comments or questions for Kyle. Mike?
Hi, sorry, I'm just finding when the mute button is on my phone. Yeah, one question about the grating is the, the, I understand the purpose of the grating. I'm wondering if that's gonna be, if that's gonna work with all the dog owners. I know the dogs I used to have did not like ratings. So I know I'd have to carry them across, which is okay on a 50-pound dog, but not so good on 110-pound dog. But I just wondered if that, if pet, pet transport was a consideration.
I'll be honest, we haven't discussed that directly, but the grating really worked for us for the suspension weight and also getting the water off of it real quick.
Yeah, yeah, for winter use. I understand that. I'm just thinking it might be a consideration.
We'll talk with it through our engineers, but that's a good question.
Shelley, your hand is up.
I couldn't find the mute button. Geez. You know, this project is important in its own right, but today, as I was talking to the surveyor that's working on Holton Hills, I realized that it was also important to Holton Hills. And it's, Connie isn't gonna have heard this one. So the section line easement vacation that we are having to do through Phase Three, this is actually going to provide the path that allows us to vacate that section line because you have to prove that there is an equal, you know, route that replaces the section line easement that you're vacating. So once, you know, the Winter Creek Trail is reconnected with a bridge, we've got that connection again. So, you know, everything is interrelated and you don't realize it. So, yeah, really important.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thanks.
Any other hands up or people on the phone? I don't see any. Anything else, Kyle?
Nope, that's it. We'll talk more next one.
Yes, right. New business. Number 12. PSCAC recommendation for GVSA to pay $2,000 for towing services and impound lot over New Year's Eve from the public safety budget.
Yeah, and this is more, more of a briefing to GBOS. PSCAC did give us a, a recommendation of, for paying upwards of $2,000 for towing services. At this point in time, we look like we may be fairly close there. We are providing housing at Aliaska Hotel. And, and our partners at Aliaska Hotel did give us a discount on a very busy night for them to station a tow truck and a tow truck driver there that can respond at all hours of the night to requests from Whittier PD. And we will be setting up a temporary impound yard in industrial, in our road industrial lot for the night, basically putting up fencing. And then in the morning, if the cars aren't cleaned and they're all towed back to town and for the evening, for the, for them to be picked up there. So, so yeah, that's just what was going on. We wanted to make GBOS aware of it. We did this last year and we had success with it and we'll, we'll continue it this year again. And if we have large events going forward, Forest Fair slash Cup, we may end up doing the same thing, that aspect. But this works within our budget for this year at this time.
Thanks, Kyle. I do recall that from last year and glad that we can see it come back. Any other questions from the board? Guy?
Yeah, Kyle, is this designed for like just illegal parking or people who get pulled over and, you know, we need to do something with their vehicle? Or are we gonna try to move cars? You know, go in and, and move cars that are illegally parked?
The, the primary, the primary issues that we have experienced in the past is one, inebriated driving or events where officer feels a vehicle needs to be impounded because of a traffic violation. And the other is a parking violation, especially where roads become congested and EMS vehicle cannot get through. And so we have a way to ticket and remove those immediately. Whereas in the past, we would have to call for service, it could be two to three hours before they get there and we had emergency situation. You know, it would be terrible. So we're hopefully to have quicker response by having them on site.
Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, I'm supportive of the idea, but I just wanted, from a procedural point of view, do we need to vote on this? Obviously, it's in new business, but it would be a little late to do this in January.
No, I don't think you need to vote on it. It's more of a, you know, I could have put, I'd put it up there in the presentations, but through your budget, you approved this for me last year. So, so it's, it's within our budget lines and I feel I can use that as, as needed to make it work.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Anything from public? Don't see any hands. Anyone on the phone? Michelle, Chief Weston? You're on mute. Still muted.
Hi, sorry about that. Yeah, I just want to speak in support of that. We did have two, well, maybe it was one. One or two seasons ago on New Year's Eve, we did have a situation where we did have an impassable road due to parked cars and people who were not able to remove their cars. And we had a stroke patient on that same street. So I am very much in support of having a way to safely move vehicles so that we're able to maintain emergency access. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Weston. Okay, seeing no other hands, we can move on to new business number 13. Gerwood Trails Committee requests for GBOS resolution of support for KMTA grant application due February 2022. Margaret or Kyle?
I can take that real quick. Basically, we're preparing ourselves for a grant cycle that's coming up. And most likely, we're looking at getting SCA crew for extended period of time to come here and work with our trail crew. We saw great success with projects that require quite a bit of labor and having extra labor here to help us with that and skilled trail builders at the same time makes for us to get a lot of work done fast. So, so we'll probably be looking towards that and develop that grant in time for our next GTC meeting. And, and so we'll have more for you in January.
Great. Thank you, Kyle. Moving to reports, number 14. The packet has a lot of this, but committee and subcommittee reports, the PSCAC report, Trails Committee, LUC Housing Working Group, and Garrish Library Report and other others. Is there anything else that I'm missing there, Margaret? Or action items below that?
No, I don't think so. We just had our second GBOS LUC meeting and we're all caught up on everything else.
Great. And COVID testing we talked about earlier. So any other items? I don't see. So I think we're ready to adjourn before the power goes out. Everyone else's power.
Let's go there before you.
Entertain, oh, Shelley, you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted, if nobody had, if somebody on here has not gotten an invite, I know that we're competing with Santa Claus and solstice skiing. But we are having the meeting for Holton Hills at 6:30 on Wednesday night on Teams. So there will be a detailed presentation and opportunity to ask lots of questions. So if you would like a link, you can ask, I think it's in the packet.
Correct.
So, yep.
Yep. And Shelley, while you're there, oh, sorry.
We'll also record it. So Margaret will try to put it on the, on the Gboss page and on the Facebook page. And I'll try to get it on the HLV page.
Great. Thank you. That's what I was going to ask for clarification.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
You too, John.
Do you need a second?
Second.
Thank you, Guy. Thank you, everyone. Have a happy solstice and holiday and see you in January.
All right, good night.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you.